Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. The agenda as presented on Friday and posted on the website is unchanged. I will note that there is a resolution which authorizes the participation of the Township of Wykoff Fire Department in a joint insurance fund fire department initiative which is at no cost to us, so it's very positive. We do have a number of ordinances that are scheduled for public hearing and further consideration this evening. We had an opportunity to review them with Township Attorney Robert Landell, and should you wish to carry those ordinances, based on comments from the planning board, the public hearing has to be opened, and if you choose to carry it, a notice of effect has to be made, and it will be carried and placed on the next agenda.
And we can do that at the business meeting, correct, Bob?
We will do that at the business meeting.
There was kind of a consensus of...
The next meeting will be November 4th.
People in the planning board say thank you.
So, we also have a presentation of a proclamation to Wykoff resident Aldo Casio this evening at 8:00. So, if there's no other questions, I can move on to policy action items, or you can go to township committee reports. Chairman, Department of the Mayor.
Thank you, good. Glad you keep rolling.
Okay, thank you. First item is the, we have begun work on the 2020 municipal budget, and you may have seen that I've requested price quotes from our planner relative to three elements of the master plan, the reexamination report, the recreation and open space inventory, also called a Rasi, and the Stormwater Management Act, element of the planning board. So, those will be costs that will have to be funded in 2020 because elements of the master plan are to be updated every 10 years, and we're on schedule for that. Regarding the direction from the Township Committee last month regarding, the last meeting regarding the O and R electric utility, we received a bulletin from them indicating that they are indicating they are starting their storm hardening process of putting electric transmission lines from their substation in Allenville that feeds Wykoff underground. And that process will be taking many months, but they did indicate that they are starting that. The other thing is, another aspect of that is I had a chance to speak to the construction official this evening, or this morning, and in accordance with the township committee's direction, he had sent letters to eight property owners that were notified by O and R that they had electrical panel problems. Two of those eight residents responded to the construction official, so he's going to be sending a second notice to the remaining six. I'd like to point out to you that the annual community personal paper shredding event is scheduled for this Saturday from 8:30 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. Volunteers are needed, so if you have Saturday morning open and you wish to come and help us assist residents with taking their personal papers out of their car and putting them in the shredder, we'd love to have you help us. Curbside leaf collection program begins October 21st. You may have seen in the packet, we received a notice from New Jersey League of Municipalities and Receters, we have won honorable mention in the public information contest for the natural resource inventory calendar that in our various other items of public information. Next week, the Christian Healthcare Center is honoring our first responders, which are our police, our fire, and our ambulance. They're honoring the first responders from Wykoff, Wayne, and Hawthorne. The Township Committee has asked me to attend the October 21st Environmental Commission meeting, which I will. October is fire prevention month. Nancy has developed a series of social media bulletins, and they will be distributed the entire month of October. The purpose is to ask residents to help, the fire department, help them. The 2020 resident calendar is on schedule. We're in full swing, we're in the process of reviewing the monthly grids and the narrative of technology used, which will be featured on each page. I want to point out that the, we have issued a 48-hour notice a few months ago, it's on the webpage, that the Tuesday, 11:19 meeting has been rescheduled to Monday, November 18th. We also today had a request from the Congressman's office to have a, excuse me, to utilize the township's meeting room on one evening from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., so that it's called a mobile office where any residents wishing to meet with the representative will be able to do that and have their questions or concerns raised. Mayor, you sent an email today saying November 12th, which is a Tuesday night.
I suggested that, again, we should have full discussion.
Makes sense, because we're open on Tuesday night for office hours, and it's a natural segue from 4:30 into 5:00 into reopening at 6:00. So, I would like to be able to close office back tomorrow and give him an answer.
What about other members of the governing body?
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it. I think that's a good idea. Let's hold up because we're open.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. That's okay.
Bob, is there precedent for something like this? Are you aware of?
No, I am not.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Are you sure?
No. I will reserve my right to speak later.
Okay, thank you. Is the web coming or Tom, you?
I'm sitting in tonight.
You are leaving in your name? Did you... Who was in on that maybe you need for us to know for 8:00? It's not a surprise.
No, we just had a brief update on Demeris, which is just a follow-up from the realtor saying that they're still moving it along.
Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, township committee reports? David, you look like you are ready to go. You want to start off?
Sure, I'll give my fire commissioner report. Met with company one, two, and three yesterday at their company meetings, just wanted to report that Fire Two is going to have a Texas Hold'em fundraiser on the 19th of October over there at Fire Two. Fire Three is having an Uncle Floyd comedy night at the Greek church on the 24th of October. And the fire department is announcing that the Taste of Wykoff is going to be scheduled at the YMCA, again, that's their main fundraiser, on the 31st of January. And then there's also, the Cedar Hill Church is doing a Cedar Jam to support the first responders from the ambulance corps and the fire department, so they're going to have a fundraiser also on the 19th over at the church. And then I just wanted to maybe just give a public service announcement, because one of the things that they reported at their meetings to give the fire department, the men and women, just some heads up, one firefighter in another state was killed fighting a fire when, during the fire, it hit some of the ammunition, and one of the bullets struck the firefighter in the face and killed him, went through the back of his head. So, the public service announcement would be to any residents who may have, you know, ammunition in their house, to please put it in a fireproof safe, because the worst thing would happen is if your house is on fire and the fire department's there to save, you know, your family and save your house, and unfortunately, one of the rounds goes off and kills one of the first responders. So hopefully, this will encourage people that may have firearms to protect them, to make sure they're in a fireproof safe. And then the only other thing is, the Wykoff Education Foundation is having their gala at the Brownstone on October 25th, so I just wanted to give, you know, a shout-out to the Wykoff Education Foundation, who does a great job of raising money for supplemental programs for the school. So, and that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Melissa?
Sure. Board of Health met on the 10th, and they discussed the new ordinance setting fees for the commissary in town that became a proper kitchen, so we're going to continue discussing that, introduce it at the next meeting next month. We're also, Bob's also going to be drafting an ordinance, we're strictly restricting feeding of wildlife in town at Carol's request, and thank you, Carol, for being here tonight. Carol's our Tyco representative, who assists us with our wildlife concerns in town. The Environmental Commission is meeting on Monday, the 21st, so this coming Monday, and we are welcoming Ben Weiner, who we just appointed, as well as Kevin Hanley, who's going to be our planning board member liaison, so they are both going to be starting on Monday with us. And also, Bob and I have been working on educating everybody about what they're calling the Real ID, which is the new ID in New Jersey that's going to be required if you want to use it to fly. As of October 1st, 2020, you're going to need this new compliant license, so we're getting all the information up on social media, and I know that we have discussed having a local DMV in town, so hopefully we'll get them to come here before the first, because pretty much everyone's going to need new licenses, so it'll be a big project.
Do we know if the local DMV in Oakland is doing it yet?
We don't have those details.
I don't think they have the technology.
Yeah.
Because the federal government is requiring that it be done for proper identification when traveling, so all residents of Jersey have to do it.
Right.
Ironically, if you're not a resident and you have a Jersey license, you don't have to do it, but it's kind of just...
But I would urge anyone to start the process sooner than later, because by September of next year, you're just going to be hit with lines at the DMV.
Or get your passport updated.
Right, or you can get your passport updated. And last night, I attended the Barn Restaurant's 90th anniversary, they started in 1929, it was really a very nice celebration, and we're very lucky to have them in town, there's a lot of history there, so that is my report.
Thank you. Rudy Boester?
I'm ready.
Want to give us a report?
Okay, I'll be brief. Start with my committee assignments. The DPW is, as we speak, building the foundation at Community Park, upon which will rest the Mere Barn. Scott Fisher tells me that he hopes to have the barn situated in place on a new foundation, and to have a roof cover over it, a new roof, before leaf pickup begins. So that's good news. Police Department, there isn't much to report. Mayor and I had coffee with a cop on Friday, the 4th, at TD Bank. TD Bank hosted it, and it was a very nice event. And last Friday, the 11th, we attended an event sponsored by, actually, our PBA Local 261 called Kids and Cops, which was held at the ball field, actually, at Landell Field over behind the Y. And there was a kickball game between the cops and the kids, and it was a lot of fun. They had a lot of fun. I think that the kids really enjoyed themselves, and then after that, they didn't play a second kickball game, but they split into two groups, and some played football and some played soccer. But they were two very, very nice events with the police department, our officers interacting with the members of the committee, so that was great. In the Sewer Department, the bids are in for the Hillside Ave, Everest Street, Polk Court Sewer Project. So, it's been quiet, but it has been moving ahead, and we have progress on it, and hopefully, probably this spring before we get going on that. I attended the Zabriski House Open House on the 5th, which was nice, and had a reception later on for some donors and some former board members of the Zabriski House, both of which Melissa attended the Z House Open House as well. And also on the 5th, we all attended the United Way Grand Opening for their home for developmentally disabled people at the corner of Clinton and Morse, and it's a great-looking facility. It fits the neighborhood wonderfully. The inside has done very nice, so we're looking forward to a really successful residence there for our development, the developmentally disabled folks. I attended the Buddy Walk. I walked around, actually with the mayor, for the, we took around, around the Y with the Buddy Walk. The planning board, other than discussing our overlay ordinances, which I can get into if we want to, carried the two applications that were up for possible testimony. One is the Galasso application on Wyndham Court North, which has been carried now until December. And what the board did was, and actually, the applicant's attorney sort of volunteered, rather than keep the residents guessing as to when the next testimony will be given, the applicant's attorney is going to renotice everyone involved when they are ready to come in and present their case to the planning board. Good, so this way, the burden's on the applicant, not on the concerned residents, as to when the next hearing will be on it. The Van Houten Ave, application for the soil movement permit has also been carried for another month. I think that's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, I have a couple of announcements, no particular order, but again, on October 5th, we're fortunate, we're at the United Way Adult Folks Home here in Wykoff, the ribbon cutting ceremony. We're really looking forward to welcoming our six new residents to town. It's a perfect location for these young adults, and it was a nice event, and we're just thrilled to have them in town. Later on, as Rudy had mentioned, we had the Buddy Walk over at the YMCA, which is a great program, it's actually named after one of our residents, Billy, and they had almost 1,500 people from Bergen County, family supporting these kids with Down Syndrome. They put together, they raised a lot of funds, it gives them a great support network, it gives them a nice opportunity to get out there, and it was their 15th year. So, I was particularly thrilled, because I've been there since the beginning. I remember when they first had this situation, they wanted to do something, they actually went to the Rotary in town. So we kind of backed them, we're over by Community Park and the Cornerstone Church, and they've just grown and flourished, and it's just a great event for children, family, and it's nice to have, nice to have so many. Perfect day. Last couple of years, ironically, they were not perfect days, they were perfect days for the family, but today was, this year was perfect. Weather-wise, a lot of support, and Rudy and I did the walk with all these families and kids, and it was, it was great. Last night, we talked about, we were there with the barn, the Township Committee, and a few other folks, by invite only, so we were happy to be on that list. Eli, it was the 90th anniversary for the barn, so 1929, and we had a nice proclamation over there, that we had Rudy Reed, because Rudy was there opening night back in '29, so it was a fitting that he would read the proclamation, right Rudy?
I remember too.
You used that joke last night, it went over well last night and tonight, so that's good. We mentioned Shred Fest is coming Saturday, we thank all our members of Environmental Commission, and our Green Team Task Force, and other volunteers to help us with the Shred Fest. It's this Saturday, as Bob had mentioned, 8:30 to 11:00, or when the truck is full, once in a while. In the spring, we kept jamming more and more into the truck, and we got it, it was like this, but it was very, very successful, so our Shred Fest is upcoming. Rudy mentioned the cops and kids, we were able to go to last Friday night, there was probably a dozen of our police officers there, and there had to be at least 25, 30 kids. Most of them were, you know, sixth to eighth graders, those formative years, it was very good for them, it was very good for our police officers, and we want to thank them. So this was a PBA 261, did it all in a row of time, put it all together. We were there a year ago when they did basketball, and it's just good to have relationship, particularly in those formative years, when these kids are becoming teenagers. Today at, today over at the senior lunch, excuse me, we had a little presentation, last time we're here, there's some activity, and I'm going to comment more on it, there's been some coyote activity in a particular area in town that we're working with Tyco, which is our animal control, actually same animal control that Franklin Lakes has, Franklin Lakes, Wykoff, but, very popular senior lunch. We have a nice presentation from Carol at Tyco. We talked about it, we have handouts for those people that are looking for it, we have a lot of information on our website. We've scheduled two presentations. One is this Thursday at 11:00 a.m., so Thursday, the 17th, at 11:00 a.m., and then Monday, the 28th, at 7:00 p.m. Both will be at the library. And I just wanted to make a couple of comments, and I'm looking at the time, which is good, then I can, then I'm going to ask Carol to say a few words. But just to give, just on the record, so everybody's been aware of, we try to get this information out, Tyco, as we know, is an animal control, they've been authorized by the Division, New Jersey Division of Fish and Wildlife, who's the local agent, to do trapping. So, she's going to tell you that since we met last, we've initiated some trapping areas to try to see what we come up with, and keep people safe. They are actively monitoring the situation, they'll be following up with the wildlife approved trapping protocols in the area, and we want to let people know that you may see a few people in the yard. Again, should you ever sight any animal, one of the positive things, if you make noise, like the people at Spring Meadow, all the seniors, 98 seniors, they all have whistles, so should they be outside, should there be something, you can blow the whistle. Historically, they don't attack people, they're looking for rabbits and birds and wildlife, but there has been two incidents with small dogs. And again, just trying to read, the place of that, I do have a greater presence, particularly in that area of town. The Board of Health is working on, as you heard Committee Woman Rubenstein say, working with feeding wildlife, updating one of our Board of Health regulations about feeding. And with that, Carol, would you be good enough to maybe come up to the mic and just give us a 10-minute summary and synopsis, because I know you have your big presentation coming up Thursday, but I think people would enjoy hearing from you, and I don't mind your back, so if you want to turn around a little bit, face the people.
I understand. Okay. Well, basically, we're experiencing unusual occurrences with wildlife right now, and it happens to be coyotes. If you live in Bergen County, you probably live here because it's beautiful. We have woods, we have mountains, we have streams, we have wildlife. Unfortunately, every so often, numbers get out of balance, and we do have an environment that's out of balance right now, we have some coyotes that are making themselves very well-known. These coyotes, all spring and early summer, were probably going after fawns, baby deer, which is what usually happens in this world, there's a predator and there's a prey. The deer population in our town is pretty large, it would even be worse without the coyotes here as a balance. Unfortunately, now that the fawns have grown up, they're full-size deer, too big for the coyotes, so they're looking for other food. Rabbits become a very favorite choice, and unfortunately, they don't know the difference between a rabbit, a cat, or a dog. If it's small, it's easy game. So what we're asking people to be more vigilant, they've definitely learned how to live with us, they learned our patterns, our habits, and most of the time, if you, and by one of the incidents that we found out, a coyote went after a dog, and the neighbor saw it, and he yelled, and the coyote ran away. Fortunately, he'd already bit the dog. So, they're acting like normal coyotes, they're afraid of us, but they're not afraid of small domestic animals, so we have to be more diligent. You also have to be careful up here, we have a resurgence of eagles and red-tailed hawks and goosehawks, they also could take small dogs and cats. So we have to just learn to be a little more vigilant on our own properties, doesn't mean you have to be fearful, you just have to use common sense. These animals definitely react to noise. As the mayor was talking about whistles, and I mean good whistles, like the referee whistles with the little ball inside that your kids torment you with, take them away and torment the children and the coyotes. I also carry around, and I left it at the senior center, I think, a small canned air. You use them on boats, but what I use them for is to stop animals from charging at me. This is a very beneficial item to have. Not only will it stop wildlife, it'll stop dogs. And in truth, the statistics tell us that you are more likely to encounter and be followed or bit by a dog than you are by a wild animal. Dog bites are up all over the state, and it's just because people have more dogs. We're the most populated state, one of the most populated states in the country, we're the smallest state, but we have the largest population per mile. So, we're very crowded here, and the animals have learned to live around us, and we just have to be more protective of our property. You know, most people put a fence up to protect their property, keep people out, we have to just start thinking better. Turn on lights, make noise, don't allow your dog to go out alone. I mean, I have three big dogs, and their job is to chase bears, but I still go outside with them, because I don't want them chasing deer, bear, coyote at night, too hard to follow them, but just using good, good common sense. I would never recommend leaving a small child outside. A child under the age of six is still a small child. I have a lot of dog bite cases from things like that, the child's out front, mom's washing the car, dog walks by, child got bit by a dog. So honestly, you have to be diligent. We do live in a beautiful area that has environments that many, many species, over 400 species of wildlife within the state, and we have everything that most states don't have. We have the plains, we have the shore, we have the mountains, we have the swamps, the highlands, everything perfect for the animals to live here, and various species do live very comfortably in this area. We do have bear, we do have coyote, we have bobcat, we have deer, we have a large population, we actually have beaverback. I've seen eagles driving around all day long now, you know, I used to just see them over by the Hudson River, excuse me, we're seeing them everywhere now. So, what we, most of us love about Bergen County is our beautiful neighborhoods, our wildlife, we just have to learn to understand those animals, and just be more cautious, and protect ourselves, and be proactive. It's not very hard to carry a whistle or a noise maker, it's not hard to teach a little kid to carry a noise maker. If I had a child that was walking back and forth from school, it will stop the dog, and truthfully, it'll stop a two-legged predator. You make noise, people leave you alone. So it's a large noise in a tiny little can, and I'm sure Ramsey Outdoor and Camp Moore are very happy I'm saying this, but you can buy it anywhere you want, including online, I just happened to go there and get them recently. So, if people are going to be more proactive, we can live very well with the wildlife that are here. We just have to be smarter than them. And as far as the coyotes, I wouldn't be in a big panic mode with these guys. Right now, we just have a couple of them that haven't left mom yet, and we're definitely encouraging to leave mom and to move on and grow up, and once they move out of the area, balance will be re-achieved, we just have an overbalance right now. And you've got to remember, a coyote has been trying to catch a roadrunner for 60 years and still hasn't done it, you're a lot smarter than the roadrunner and the coyote. So I just more, you know, just advise people, just be smart. You moved here because of the way it looks, or many of us grew up here, and I know, you know, 30 years ago, when I started doing the animal control, a little over 30 years ago, I didn't have to deal with bear, coyote, bobcat, snakes, rattlesnakes, I have to deal with all that now, because we've worked so hard to make our environment so beautiful, and it's a good message, it means that our environment is rebounding, that these animals are here, that eagles have come back. So, try to enjoy the wildlife, don't let them make you afraid to be outside, but at the same time, be smarter than them, outthink them, don't leave out food. One of the favorite things I hear is, but I'm only feeding a couple of cats. Well, I've showed people pictures of their cat feeding station at night with raccoons and skunks and everything else there, and if you have cat food out and you have cats out, the coyotes will eat the cat food, and they'll hang out and eat the cat. So, it's definitely, we just got to be smarter. If you want to have cats, put them in your garage or keep them someplace where they're going to be safe. But we're not living, you know, we're not in the Bronx, we're not in New York City where there's no place for these animals to live, there's plenty of places for these animals to live. And as much as everybody's saying that we're building on every piece of property, if our And as much as everybody's saying that we're building on every piece of property, if our building in this area was affecting them, their populations wouldn't be growing. They are, because there's plenty of habitat, there's plenty of food, artificial or natural, and we just have to be good with it. We have to be careful with our properties. Keep your bushes trimmed up, keep lights on, um, teach your family to turn on lights when they go outside. Most cars nowadays, the lights stay on when you get out of the car, use that beam of light to get into the house. Know where you're walking, don't walk blindly through the dark. All right? Thank you very much.
Good, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. And I know you're not feeling well, but thanks for staying with us for the eight o'clock meeting as well. Bob, I don't know if you have anything to add?
Yes, if I may, if I can. Carol, thank you for your, for your guidance. We, uh, as our certified animal control officer, we do rely on you. And I know I was speaking with the Franklin Lakes administrator as well, I know he relies on you too, so thank you for that. Carol has also suggested that we conduct public education sessions and that we issue public information. I will point out that her PowerPoint presentation that she provided in Franklin Lakes about three weeks ago has been on our website for a number of weeks, and that, that still is on our website. We, we do have a number of two-sided bulletins that can be distributed this evening. In regard to, uh, the, uh, the guidance from, uh, Mrs. Rubenstein, I have started drafting an ordinance for the next four-day health meeting, which will again follow through with your guidance in terms of, although we do have a prohibition, we have an ordinance that prohibits the feeding of wildlife, and your suggestion will be making those three specific changes to, 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 uh, to enhance that. We have also advised the Police Department of that as well. We have also just finished today a couple new social media, uh, media bulletins, which will be in this Thursday's weekly e-news and will be posted on social media. So we are doing that as well. And, um, we are in the process of posting via sign, uh, the access points to our leaf collection property, which is located at the end of Woodbury Road and at the end of Spring Meadow Road to prohibit, uh, anybody from, from trespassing on it. Uh, there was a, it was brought to my attention today that there was a post on Facebook, um, in the last few days that indicated that a number of young children are riding their bikes in there and they're leaving food, and that food is, is attracting some of the coyotes. It's really no different than what you're talking about in terms of guidance for us as homeowners. Don't, don't leave a food, a bird feeder on the ground. Don't, don't, don't leave food outside to feed a wild animal in second. Make sure your garbage cans are tight, so they can't access them.
One of the problems I didn't pass, uh, speak about it, I'm sorry. When human food is left out for wildlife, they use their fear of humans. They expect us to feed them, which was the case of the example now, this couple of years ago with the bears. People were feeding the bears, so then they started following, hiding, grabbing them with their claws. We don't want them to think we're good people. We want them to think we are the person in control. Feeding them in the sense of our scent on their food makes them way too familiar with humans, and they will approach humans.
Good, thank you. Okay, um, anybody else before I ask this for motion to adjourn? Just start of the meeting, please?
Just for the, I just did not report the shade tree committee met tonight, so I just a brief update. Scott Fisher, our DPW director, will be pulling some of the trees out of Russell Farm and planting them throughout town. One of the areas is Manchester. The other thing that came up is they've got a problem with locust trees on Hillray toward the high side of the circle, and they're saying next year, they're probably gonna have to have about 50 to 70 trees on hillside removed, uh, because it's causing some damage to the roadways.
Is that from the Longhorn beetle?
Yeah, I think so.
Asian Longhorn beetle?
Uh, no, they, the locust, the locust trees, the ones that the, um, developer put in when he built it.
But are they dying or are they?
No, they're just, they're out of control.
Okay.
So, yeah, otherwise they gotta be severely pruned back, and they're gonna look terrible. So they're recommending that they be removed.
Okay.
So that's it.
Tom, the only thing, um, I don't know if we wanna discuss these ordinances that the planning board, uh, spoke about, um, Monday night, last. The overlay ordinances and the two ancillary ordinances. Um, you know, Bob mentioned, they are on the agenda. Um, the subcommittee is recommending that we carry them. Are there any questions about that? I mean, we have the time now to deal with it. I can, if there are any questions, I can answer them, or I can go through a brief run-through of the, the six ordinances. Your call.
I would prefer we have all five township committee people here.
Okay, so then we'll just carry them tonight?
Ryan Skene is not here tonight.
Yeah, and he's a member of the subcommittee.
He was part of the subcommittee, so.
I would agree, and Rob Randell's not here either.
Okay, so then, then we'll just, the understanding is then, we will not, they're on for second reading tonight, we will not adopt them, we will carry them until our next meeting.
Right.
Okay. All right. As long as everyone's okay with that, without an explanation. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I just say as a point of order, Joyce, uh, I think the ordinances must be act, acted upon, the public hearing must be opened, a decision will not be made, but a statement must be made that'll be carried to the next meeting. And we need to put on the record, it's, it's Monday, November 4th, correct? So that it's, it's clear for the record.
Formalized, right?
That it, it is carried.
So we'll do the, we'll do the proportion, including opening up the public hearing, closing it, and then I'll announce if the mayor announces.
Exactly. If anyone has any public comment on it, that can be, okay, be received at that time, but each ordinance needs to be, in order to do it the right way, each ordinance needs to have its public hearing. Further consideration can be voting it down, it could be approving, it could be carrying.
It'll be a motion to carry.
So we'll do each ordinance and then?
At the end, do a motion to carry.
Fair enough.
Okay. I could have a motion to adjourn the work session?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the work session is adjourned. Our business meeting will start promptly at 8:00 p.m. And, uh, thank you.
Wow. Nice. This is really a first.
Okay, this is the 8:00 p.m. October 2015, 2019 Township Committee Business Meeting.
I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Wykoff Township Committee to order. I please ask everybody to stand for the flag salute and remain standing for the invocation of Township Committee Member Rudy Bostrich.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of liberty and justice for all.
All right, if everyone will bow their heads, I will, um, do the invocation. Father in heaven, we come into your presence again tonight to thank you for the blessings that we all enjoy in this country and in this town. Oh Lord, tonight, we ask, uh, a special blessing on our friend Aldo Casio, who was here tonight with us, and we ask your, we thank you for him and for the many works of charity and kindness that he does. And we also ask for a blessing on this Alethians and the Merry Help of Christians Academy, who will be honoring him shortly. We are always grateful for everything that you have. We ask your guidance on our decisions we make here at this forum tonight. And at this time of the year, and as you have exhorted us in the scriptures, God, tonight, we ask you for peace among nations and the peace of Jerusalem. Amen.
Okay, so it's my pleasure, before we, well, let's go backwards. Joyce, can we, we won't call the township committee, please?
Certainly. Ms. Bostrich?
Here.
Mrs. Rubenstein?
Here.
Mr. Stanley?
Here.
Mayor Madigan?
I'm here.
Thank you.
Okay, now it could be my pleasure. My pleasure to, uh, read a proclamation for our good friend Aldo Casio. He's in the back. We're probably the real force behind Aldo. Jill Casio is here. So I'm gonna read this for you, then I'd like to ask you to come out, maybe say something and, or tie for a picture, of course. Okay. So whereas we gather to honor Aldo Casio with the highest honor of the dame's award for his service, kindness, and dedication to the Merry Help of Christians Academy and its scholarship fund to help young women attend the Merry Help of Christians Academy. And whereas Aldo, there was tireless efforts, fundraising contributions, and donations to the students of the Merry Help of Christians Academy Scholarship Fund, and his hosting of many holiday dinners and events for the academy, has made a tremendous impact on the academic lives of the students at Merry Help of Christians Academy. And whereas Aldo Cassidy, a longtime resident of Wykoff, owner and culinary chef at Aldo's Italian Restaurant and the Brick House Steakhouse in Wykoff, fueled by his love and passion for fine food, has served the community of Wykoff and many patrons as entrepreneur of these renowned restaurants since 1983. And whereas Aldo's passion for soccer has been shared by so many, Aldo was the first soccer coach selected for the Ramapo High School Hall of Fame. Coaching kids in the torpedo soccer program was his favorite pastime, and still remains very close with many of those in this local program. He's also renowned for coaching Giuseppe Rossi, who was a famous soccer player in Italy. And whereas Aldo's special act of kindness was demonstrated after the September 11 tragedy at the World Trade Center, volunteering to cook warm meals for many rescue workers and firefighters working at Ground Zero. He traveled weekly with his equipment, food, and volunteers to set up camp and prepare and serve home-cooked meals. And whereas Aldo was selected by Oasis as their 2010 annual dinner dance honorary of the annual gala of the Hope Foundation for Aldo's devotion and commitment to give back to the community and providing service to Oasis, an organization for women and children. And whereas Aldo is most proud of serving the community here in Wykoff and for his caring generosity and humble support for which he is widely known. His fundraising events have earned him the Gregory Hirsch Heart Foundation for Pediatric Heart Care and Research at the Joseph M. Zary Children's Hospital, Hackensack University Medical Center, and as Humanitarian of the Year. In 2012, he was also selected as Citizen of the Year for the Hackensack Chapter, Chapter of Unico. And in 218, he was the recipient of the Tree and Drea Dora Award for the Sicilian Federation of New Jersey, just to name a few. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Township Committee of the Township of Wykoff, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, that Mr. Aldo Casio be recognized as an active participant of the North Jersey community and for weaving a part of himself into the fabric of Wykoff through the successful operation of his reputable businesses and his countless years of caring, support, generosity, and dedication to many local nonprofit organizations that have greatly benefited from Mr. Casio's strong, heroic contributions. All right, we're gonna come, we're gonna come down, we're gonna congratulate you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Bob Sheehan's gonna take a photograph.
Congratulations.
If we have any opportunity, but after the picture, I'll. The people are taking pictures, Aldo. I'm surprised how well we film this, uh, location.
Thank you.
Aldo, do you know if you're right?
Not a painting.
Yeah, come on, Jill. Now, before Aldo says something, I think we need a round of applause for Jill. Jill, I go way back, if you, if Aldo was 83, 84, 85, you see people, oh, Mayor Madigan right in front of the line.
That's right. It's a pleasure.
All right, Aldo, you wanna say something?
Yes, yes.
I'm gonna get to the mic.
All right, I get the mic too?
Yes. We didn't record this. This is frustrating.
All right.
Say what? You're gonna do the empty there?
Yeah.
You stand right here. Ah, that's the, we all can.
It's better. So I guess Mr. Madigan said a lot of things, yep? And I thank you, thank the committee, the township committee, but this is the first time I get a chance to speak in this room for something happy, for something that has nothing to do with, you feel I'm, and, yes, you feel I face the firing squad, but no. So I guess the reason why I came to Wykoff is because I met my wife, and she lived in Wykoff, and I find the little restaurant there, and 36 years ago, but she's been here 50-some years. So, but I just wanna thank everybody. I guess I don't have to say how much I love Wykoff, the people in Wykoff, the kids in Wykoff, everything about Wykoff, it's in my heart. My kids grew up here, they went to school here, my wife went to school in Ramapo, so I'm a Wykoff guy, and I love it, and thanks for everything.
Yes, forget to stand up again. And if you like, if those are here, rather we call recess, if you like to leave, you can leave, because we're gonna be going to ordinances.
Good to see you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
I will. Bye-bye, thank you.
Take care.
It's a pleasure.
Thank you.
Aldo, the thanks is all ours. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good night, nice meeting you.
Joyce, just to go back, just to ensure, did we read the Open Public Meeting Act statement yet? So we're gonna do that right now, how about that? Thank you.
This regular meeting of the Township Committee of the Township of Wykoff is now in session. In accordance to Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, I wish to advise that notice of this meeting has been posted on the bulletin board in Memorial Town Hall. Copy's been filed with the Township Clerk, copies were sent to the Ridgewood News Record and North Jersey Herald and News. All newspapers with general circulation throughout the Township of Wykoff. These 48 hours prior to the meeting, the agenda was posted, filed, and mailed to the papers.
Thank you. Here to the roll call, with, as noted, unfortunately, through the presentation for Aldo Casio. Now I'd like to have a, a motion for a public comment period, five minutes per speaker for public comment on any governmental issue that a member of the public feels very concerned to the resident township of Wykoff.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody wish to adjust the Township Committee? Please give your name and address. Come on up, anybody? Seeing none, can we have a motion to close to the public?
Motion to close.
Can we have a motion for the?
All in favor?
I'm sorry.
Aye.
We need a second, all right. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so can we have a motion for the? Okay, so can we have a motion for the approval for the October 2nd, 2019 Township Committee Work Session and Regular Business Meeting Minutes?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Bostrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rubenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
Uh, yes. Okay, can we go to the consent agenda?
Sure.
Please.
All matters listed below are considered by the Township Committee to be routine in nature. There'll be no separate discussion of these items. If any discussion is desired by the Township Committee, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Resolutions adoption of the following. Nineteen three hundred proclaim October ten as put the brakes on Vitality Day. Three oh one authorization to submit a sustainable New Jersey Gardini's Environmental Fund Energy Project Grant Application. Three oh two authorize participation in the fire department initiative. Three oh three payment of bills, and three oh four refund of certain overpaid taxes, et cetera. Motions, approval of specifications and authorization of advertised competitive bidding for firefighter respirator mandate compliance, envision and hearing testing for the school crossing guards. Have a motion on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bostrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rubenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Madigan?
Yes. Okay, so we need a little guidance, so we're gonna give the ordinances. Bob, can you guide us? Bob and Joyce, please.
We're gonna do the ordinances, and we'll go down and we'll open for the public hearing, we'll close the public hearing, and then I will make a statement to carry to the...
Okay, thank you.
Or don't you, don't you need a motion to carry? Somebody has to do a motion to carry? Yeah, what I probably will do, Bob, unless, I will briefly summarize the rationale for carrying and make the motion.
Yes.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
Just so the minutes are clear, the, the motion to carry needs to be done while the public hearing is open.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I have ordinance number eighteen eighty-nine entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Land Use Ordinance of the Township of Wykoff to amend pedestrian circulation and safety standards. For second reading by title only, a copy of this ordinance has been posted on the bulletin board in Town Hall where public notices are customarily posted, and copies have been made available to members of the general public of the township who have requested the same.
All right, I'll move the, the ordinance on second reading by title only.
Second.
Mr. Bostrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rubenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Madigan?
Uh, yes, this is the time and the place for the public hearing, an ordinance eighteen eighty-nine. All persons who wish to be heard, please state your name and address before making your statement.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Chairman, I would like to explain that at the planning board meeting, when this ordinance was discussed, um, there were numerous questions on the part of the planning board members, which had to do with which zones this proposed ordinance applied to, uh, whether this will trigger a requirement for someone developing just a single residential property regarding sidewalks, um, would a builder, which, the same would apply to a builder for a single residential lot, um, there was question about clarification of the handicap passage requirement for residential property, and, um, whether bicycle parking areas would be restricted for businesses by eliminating vehicle parking, uh, among a few other comments. So based on those comments, I would move to carry this, um, ordinance to the November fourth meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'll take a roll call. Mr. Bostrer?
Well, when do we close public comment? We should close that now, right?
Okay.
So that, so now, I'll move the public hearing be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Now we need a vote on my motion.
Okay. I'll do a roll call vote.
Yeah.
I need a second to your motion.
Well, let me move it.
Okay. Um, Mr. Bostrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rubenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Madigan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have ordinance number eighteen ninety entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Land Use Ordinance of the Township of Wykoff to amend Chapter one eighty-six zoning to add one new inclusionary overlay mixed-use zone consistent with and designed to effectuate the township's adopted two thousand and eighteen third-round housing element and fair share plan. For second reading by title only, a copy of the ordinance has been posted on the bulletin board in Town Hall where public notices are customarily posted, and copies were made available to general, to members of the general public who have requested the same.
I move the second reading, uh, on, by title only. I move the ordinance on second reading by title only.
Second.
Mr. Bostrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rubenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Madigan?
Uh, yes. This is the time and place for the public hearing on ordinance number eighteen ninety. All persons who wish to be heard, please state your name and address before making your statement.
Uh, Mayor, um, eighteen, although ordinance eighteen ninety had less comments and questions, um, by the members of the planning board at their hearing, um, and probably could be adopted with minimal changes without reintroduction, um, the subcommittee felt that rather than piecemeal this, we would just, um, um, carry all of these ordinances to the November fourth meeting. Um, and for that reason, I'll make a motion that we carry this, um, ordinance eighteen ninety to the November fourth meeting.
Okay, can we have a motion to close to the public first?
We need to second it.
Upside.
Second it.
Okay. Mr. Bostrer?
We get it back up.
Sorry about that.
We get it back up. We need a motion to close to the public.
Yeah, so, um, having said that, I move the public hearing on the ordinance be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we have motion and the second.
Okay.
To carry.
Okay, it's carried to the November fourth meeting. Mr. Bostrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rubenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Madigan?
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have ordinance number eighteen ninety-one entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Land Use Ordinance of the Township of Wykoff to amend Chapter one eighty-six zoning to add one new inclusionary overlay mixed-use zone consistent with and designed to effectuate the township's adopted two thousand and eighteen third-round housing element and fair share plan. For second reading by title only, a copy of the ordinance has been posted on the bulletin board in Town Hall where public notices are customarily posted, and copies have been made available to members of the general public of the township who have requested the same.
I'll move the ordinance on second reading by title only.
Second.
Mr. Bostrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rubenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Madigan?
Uh, yes, this is the time and place for the public hearing on ordinance number eighteen ninety-one. All persons who wish to be heard, please state your name and address before making your statement.
Okay, Mayor, on ordinance eighteen ninety-one, there was considerably more, this is one of the overlay zone ordinances, there was considerably more discussion and questions by members of the planning board than the other three overlay zone ordinances. They had to do with, uh, the ability to dictate by ordinance design of a building, uh, requirement, an addition of requirements for underground utilities, types of lighting, uh, green building materials, and, uh, sprinklers and fire safety, along with, uh, a requirement for certain green space and laws. So based on all of those, um, issues of discussion, um, I'm gonna recommend and make a motion that we carry ordinance eighteen ninety-one also to the November fourth meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, before we do that, we gotta close to the public and hear the public comments. So we have a motion to close to the public?
I move the public hearing, hearing on the ordinance be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion is second.
I mean, I'll take a roll call on the motion. Mr. Bostrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rubenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Madigan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have ordinance number eighteen ninety-two entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Land Use Ordinance of the Township of Wykoff to amend Chapter one eighty-six zoning to add one new inclusionary overlay mixed-use zone consistent with and designed to effectuate the township's adopted two thousand and eighteen third-round housing element and fair share plan. For second reading by title only, a copy of the ordinance has been posted on the bulletin board in Town Hall where public notices are customarily posted, and copies have been made available to members of the general public of the township who have requested the same.
I move the ordinance on second reading by title only.
Second.
Mr. Bostrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rubenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Madigan?
Yes, this is the time and place for public hearing and ordinance number eighteen ninety-two. All persons who wish to be heard, please state your name and address before making your statement.
Uh, Mayor, um, the, the rationale for, I'm gonna make a motion to carry, uh, this ordinance as well to November fourth, the rationale being similar to that of eighteen ninety, there were some questions, uh, which were asked by planning board members, um, not in as much detail as eighteen ninety-one, but rather than piecemeal this, uh, the feeling is that we will carry, uh, this ordinance as well to November fourth, so I will, uh, make that motion to carry ordinance eighteen ninety-two to November fourth. Second.
All in favor?
Well, before we do that, let's go back, we're just, okay, before we do that, can I have a motion to close to the public, please?
I, I move the public hearing on the ordinance to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then we can move the motion.
Okay. I'll do a roll call on the motion, okay? Mr. Bostrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rubenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Madigan?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I have ordinance number eighteen ninety-three entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Land Use Ordinance of the Township of Wykoff to amend buffer and planting standards. For second reading by title only, a copy of the ordinance has been posted on the bulletin board in Town Hall where public notices are customarily posted, and copies have been made available to members of the general public of the township who have requested the same.
I move the ordinance on second reading by title only. Second.
Mr. Bostrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rubenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Madigan?
Yes. This is the time and place for the public hearing on ordinance number eighteen ninety-three. All persons who wish to be heard, please state your name and address before making your statement.
Um, Mayor, the, I'm sorry, anyone else? I guess, eighteen ninety-three is what I, I have referred to as one of the ancillary ordinances, it's not an overlay zone ordinance, and it, it, um, is an ordinance which, um, amends, uh, regulations for buffers and planting standards, and there were many questions on the part of the planning board members, uh, regarding this ordinance, and, um, the thinking was the same as eighteen eighty-nine, that we could hold this and, and just move the four overlay zone ordinances, um, this, if, um, when the planning board members' concerns are possibly implemented, could, could trigger reintroduction of this ordinance, so, um, at the least it needs to be carried until November fourth, so I will make that motion to carry this till November fourth.
Second.
Now I'll make a motion that the public hearing on the ordinance be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'll do a roll call on the motion. Mr. Bostrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rubenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Madigan?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, I have ordinance number eighteen ninety-four entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Land Use Ordinance of the Township of Wykoff to amend Chapter one eighty-six zoning to add one new inclusionary overlay mixed-use zone consistent with and designed to effectuate the township's adopted two thousand and eighteen third-round housing element and fair share plan. For second reading by title only, a copy of the ordinance has been posted on the bulletin board in Town Hall where public notices are customarily posted, and copies have been made available to members of the general public of the township who have requested the same.
I move the ordinance on second reading by title only.
Second.
Mr. Bostrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rubenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Madigan?
Yes, this is the time and place for the public hearing on ordinance number eighteen ninety-four. All persons who wish to be heard, please state your name and address before making your statement.
Mayor, at the risk of sounding repetitive, um, this ordinance...
It's the last one, correct?
It's the last one. This ordinance, um, is another overlay zone ordinance upon which there were not a lot of questions on the part of the planning board members, or comments for that matter, and probably could have been, uh, changed, uh, without renotice and adopted tonight. However, as in with ordinance, um, the other three overlay ordinances, we, we felt it best, or the subcommittee feels it best, not to piecemeal this, uh, so I am going to, uh, now make a motion that eighteen ninety-four also be carried until the November fourth meeting. Second.
Okay, before we do that, can I have a motion to close to the public?
So moved.
Public hearing portion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the roll call on the motion. Uh, Mr. Bostrer?
Yes.
Mrs. Rubenstein?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Madigan?
Uh, yes. Thank you. Before I adjourn, does anybody have any comments, or anything you need to say? If she has.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a, a comment. I'd like to compliment the Township Committee Subcommittee that worked on these ordinances, uh, an awful lot of work went into this, and these ordinances, when you get into the details, you see that the Township Committee Subcommittee is trying to, uh, protect the residents who live adjacent to these developments with such things as buffers and plantings, and their effort to make the buildings aesthetically pleasing. We're very fortunate to have the planning board we have, they are similar to our other boards, and I think these questions from the planning board just show how conscientious and skillful and artful our, our boards are. So I, I just wanna point out, the fact that these ordinances were not adopted this evening should not be viewed in any way negatively, but they should be viewed in the sense that the Township Committee Subcommittee put an exceptional amount of work in, and our planning board did a great job, uh, during their review.
Well said, well said.
Yeah, it's a very good point, Bob. The planning board members, they read all this stuff, they had a lot of questions, and they were not afraid to ask questions, so it was, it was, uh, we, and we learned a lot, and, and at the end of the day, we'll have a better product because of it. I also wanted to mention that there are three ordinances, overlay ordinances that, not overlay ordinances, three ordinances dealing with our, um, our affordable housing plan that Planner McManus is, is still working on and needs to submit to us. Uh, in fact, Rob Landell, uh, is trying to get those as quickly as possible, um, because while we have all of these ordinances, which we have to work to adopt, those we haven't even seen yet, so we need to see them, and that is part of our overall plan before we go back in front of the court for final approval.
Okay.
So, thank you for your...
What question for the court?
Pardon?
What's the date that the court...
I'm not sure. Tom, do you know? I'm, I'm not sure.
November something, December eight.
Do we think we're gonna have the three ordinances by the next minute?
Pushing.
We're pushing.
Okay.